Good evening and welcome to the July 25, 2024. What may the Walnut Creek Planning Commission... Secretary, please take your role.
Commissioner Kwak?
Present.
Commissioner Ward?
Here.
Commissioner Klopp?
Here.
Commissioner Reiser?
Here.
Commissioner Nating?
Here.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Here.
Chair Strongman?
Here. And moving on to the consent counter, do we have anything on the consent calendar?
I do not believe we have anything on the consent calendar.
Thank you. We will move on to public communications. This is the part of the meeting where any member of the public can comment on any... Anything at all except that it's on the agenda. So do we have any member of the public who would like to make a comment? Seeing none, we will move on to public hearings. And we're actually going to reverse the public hearings. We will do the Plaza Appeal last. And we'll start out with the 4B. And we will first of all ask, have we have... Anybody have any expertise communications on any of the projects we're hearing tonight? Seeing none?
No expertise, but I have a... I'm on the recusal map for the MSP.
Okay.
So I'll be recusing myself.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'd like to say that I was looking at the item 4A, viewing the building from Google Street Maps to see the vantage points from the 680 freeway.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to 4B. It is the Chandry New Single Family Residence. Is there any member of the public who would like to make a comment on this? Seeing none, we will continue this item to August 22, 2024.
And just for the record that the public hearing was opened?
Yes.
And it's continued to that date?
Yes. And moving on to item 4C, Consistency Determination Under Government Code 65402, General Plan. Would the staff start with a presentation on that, please?
Evening Commissioners, my name's Alex Wong, Senior Engineer with the Capital Improvement Program. So this item is for a capital improvement project. This project will require acquisition of existing sidewalk located on private property for construction of the project. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission find that potential acquisitions to be consistent with the city's adopted general plan. So site description. So this... The Walnut Boulevard sidewalk at Walnut Heights Elementary Project is part of the city's adopted 24-25 capital budget to install sidewalk on Walnut Boulevard between Fraser Drive and Bellows Court. It's shown in diagram on the left. A portion of the existing sidewalk at 4008 and 4016 Walnut Boulevard is located on private property. The sidewalk is required to be removed and replaced with a wider sidewalk at this location to allow for safer pedestrian crossing at this intersection. The two properties where the city is acquiring real property is located on the north side of Walnut Boulevard, across from Fraser Drive. These properties are zoned as single-family residential, all 15, as shown in the map on the bottom right. So project description. This project starts at Fraser Drive on Walnut Boulevard with a new bowed-out intersection. The boughout will reduce the traffic lane width, reducing crossing distance for pedestrians and improve visibility, allowing a safer crossing. The new sidewalk will extend east on the north side of Walnut Boulevard to Walnut Heights Elementary, extending to the county border at Bellows Court. So you can see in the diagram there on the right... On the left is the blown-up of the intersection of Fraser and Walnut Boulevard. Top right there is more blown up, more far-out view of that intersection, including sidewalk that extends east on the north side of Walnut Boulevard. As you follow down in the second diagram, it goes up the hill toward Walnut Heights Elementary. The new sidewalk will extend along the frontage of the school, extending all the way to Bellows Court to the city limit... To the county limits. So the acquisitions. So here are the two placemaps of the two properties. The acquisition at 4008 Walnut Boulevard includes 267 square feet of property along the frontage. And at 4016 Walnut Boulevard includes 120 square foot of the property along their frontage. These two properties are located adjacent to the Fraser Drive boughout, and removal of the sidewalk is needed for construction of these boughouts. So CEQA. So this project is exempt from CEQA with Section 15301(c), Class 1, Existing Facilities, General Exemption for Projects With Negligible or No Expansion of Existing Facilities, and 15061(b)(3) as project does not have potential to cause significant effects on environment. So certain goals and policy of the general plan encourage city efforts to expand sidewalk in the vicinity of school areas. There are no goals or policies in the general plan that would prohibit this project. This project meets goals for Goal 3, Maintain a transportation network that provides mobility for all ages and abilities for all... And for all areas of the community. And also Action 3.1.4 as development and redevelopment occurs requires street right-of-way dedications and improvements to the local road network consistent with adopted street standards. So staff recommends that the Planning Commission move to adopt a resolution making findings determining that both of the following actions are in conformance with the City of Walnut Creek's adopted general plan in accordance with provision of state planning law, Government Code 65402. One, the potential acquisition of the 267 square foot strip of real property located at the frontage of 4008 Walnut Boulevard. And two, the potential acquisition of 120 square foot strip of real property located at 4016 Walnut Boulevard. And that concludes the presentation. Available for any questions you may have.
Thank you for your presentation. Does... Any Commissioners have questions?
And staff has provided an errata sheet for minor changes to the... Minor corrections to the staff report and resolution.
I see no questions. Thank you for your presentation. We'll now open it up for a public comment. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, we will close public comments and bring it back to the Commission for comments or possibly a motion.
I have a comment... Actually, I thought of a question I wanted to ask you.
Okay.
Which... So these little slivers of land are being purchased by the city from the property owners.
Yes.
Are they willing sellers?
There's a... Yeah, they're appraised and then there's a cost associated with the purchase.
Okay. And the sellers are willing to sell it?
Yeah.
They might have to anyway, but they're happy with... Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Or a motion? Could you bring back the last slide, please? Yep, Commissioner Ward.
Okay, so I'll move that we adopt the resolution making findings determining that both of the actions are in conformity of the City of Walnut Creek adopted general plan as set forth in the resolution that we've been presented with, as written.
Second.
We have two seconds. Please call the role, please.
Commissioner Kwak?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Klopp?
Yes.
Commissioner Reiser?
Yes.
Commissioner Nating?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Chair Strongman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And moving on to the Plaza MSP, continuing June 13 Planning Commission meeting. Yes, let's... Mr. Commissioner Reiser will be recusing himself for this. Let him vacate the room first.
There's no... She need me to stick around for her?
Staff doesn't have any reports at the end, so...
Okay.
Okay. Enjoy the evening. Go ahead with your presentation.
Okay. Well, thank you Chair Strongman and Commissioners. Staff has prepared a presentation for tonight. Good evening, my name is Stephen Cook. I am an Assistant Planner with the city. Before use an appeal of a master sign program located at 1331, 1333 North California Boulevard. For some site context, the site is located in the downtown core area of the city and is bounded by Bonanza Street to the north, North California Boulevard to the east, and Mount Diablo Boulevard to the south. Furthermore, the property contains two existing seven-story commercial office buildings. Previously, the project was reviewed by the Design Review Commission. The DRC determined that the project was exempt from CEQA pursuant to CEQA Guideline Sections 15301, Class 1 Existing Facilities. Additionally, the DRC reviewed and approved the master sign program subject to the revisions that included limiting the number of requested freestanding signs and eliminating skyline signs completely. Within the required 10-day period, the applicant submitted an appeal for reconsideration by the Planning Commission regarding their original request. As this is a de novo hearing, the Planning Commission may affirm, modify, or reverse the DRC's decision. The Planning Commission may also adopt additional conditions if needed. The first appeal request by the applicant is regarding freestanding signs. The site contains two existing freestanding signs, as shown as P1 and P2. The MSP is requesting three new additional freestanding signs, as shown as M1, M2, and M3. The sign ordinance allows one freestanding sign per one street frontage. Therefore, this total request for five freestanding signs requires a sign ordinance exception to allow additional freestanding signs beyond the allowable limit at the site. Staff initially recommended approval to the DRC for all three freestanding signs. However, although the DRC approved the location of all three new freestanding signs, the DRC limited the master sign program to choose between M1 and M2 at the intersection of Mount Diablo and North California. The applicant has appealed this decision and wishes to be reconsidered for the original proposal of having both M1 and M2 without having to choose between both freestanding signs. The second appeal request by the applicant is regarding skyline signs. The site does not contain any existing skyline signs. The MSP is requesting four new skyline signs with six possible locations, three per each building. The sign ordinance allows signs beyond 25 feet in height if all required code findings can be made. However, the proposed skyline signs will not and therefore requires a sign ordinance exception to allow for a height increase. Staff initially recommend... Recommended approval to the DRC as a means for the DRC to consider skyline signs on major arterial streets, which is North California and Mount Diablo. Additionally, staff recommended the DRC to consider conditions that limit placement locations as the plans illustrate the skyline signs as having only approximate locations. However, the DRC determined that the proposed skyline signs do not meet any of the required code findings for a height increase and denied the sign ordinance... Sign ordinance exception. The applicant has appealed this decision and wishes to be reconsidered for the original proposal of four skyline signs, six locations. So three per each building, but with a limit of two skyline signs per each building. To summarize the appeal requests, the applicant is proposing three new freestanding signs for a total of five, which will require a sign ordinance exception to increase the number of allowable freestanding signs for the site. Additionally, the applicant is proposing four skyline signs that will require a sign ordinance exception as the required findings for height increase beyond 25 feet cannot be made. Staff recommends the Planning Commission to move to determine the project is exempt from CEQA per Section 15301 Existing Facilities and consider adopting the draft resolution in Attachment 1 to approve the applicant's appeal request or consider adopting the draft resolution in Attachment 2 to uphold the DRC's decision. That concludes the presentation. Staff is available for any questions.
Thank you for your presentation. Commissioners, who would like to ask questions? Commissioner Anderson?
I have a couple. It says that the... I'm trying to understand the underlying requirements here. It says that... This is relating to the skyline signs. Business identified by this sign must occupy all floor space adjacent to the wall upon which the sign is to be placed, from the ground to the top of the sign. So in other words, if it's on the fourth level... Fourth floor. It has to occupy all four floors?
That's correct. And that's one of the findings that this signage proposal will not meet and therefore requires a sign exception to be approved with the understanding that not all allowable code findings can be made. So it would be an exception to that finding.
Okay. So do you know the rationale for requiring so much space to deserve a sign? Is it just to reduce the number of signs that can be put up, or...?
It's... I'm unsure of the intention. I just know that that's one of the regulations for sign ordinance.
Okay, fair enough. The... Also relating to skyline signs, the comparison was made to the signs that were allowed in the Golden Triangle buildings. And it indicated... Now, were those also unable to make the findings?
Yes, this would be similar to those approvals.
So there's an exception there. And the rationale was given to distinguish the two was that those signs would be visible from 680 and BART. Is that the main purpose of the skyline signs? They'd be visible from highways and BARTs as opposed to streets?
That's correct. That was one of the considerations of that previous approval that considered visibility from the I-680, visibility from the BART station as a reason for the Design Review Commission to approve those skyline signs. This proposal is sort of building off that precedent by potentially allowing arterial streets, so Mount Diablo and North California, to also be reasons for the approval of skyline signs for increased visibility to pedestrians or vehicles.
So if we go along with the Design Review proposal on this, that would suggest that in the future, if your sign is visible from the highway or BART, then that's fine. If it's just the street, probably not.
That's correct. And that was also a concern of the Design Review Commission of establishing precedent.
And then there was one last question. It says that as far as the freestanding signs and having... Allowing four, but not five. It says that they felt reducing the amount of additional freestanding signs was more appropriate for the site. It doesn't say why it would be more appropriate to have four than five. Is that just a question of the street frontages? Having four street frontages?
I believe the Design Review Commission stated that the reasoning for limiting either choosing M1 or M2's freestanding sign was to reduce oversaturation of freestanding signs on an intersection and which led them to apply this condition of choosing either M1 or M2 in that approval.
Okay. And I'm getting kind of into the weeds here, but is the idea behind having four street frontages and therefore four signs allowable is the implication there should be one on each of those streets?
Yes, that's what our current sign ordinance requires.
Could there be four on one side and none on the others?
Yeah, one per street frontage.
One per street frontage. So given that, I'm wondering why, since M2 is a second sign facing Northern California Boulevard, but M1 is the only sign facing Mount Diablo Boulevard. It would seem that M1 would be allowed, but M2 wouldn't. But why are they giving a choice there? If you want to have one sign on each frontage.
Yeah. I'm unsure. I think that was the Design Review's compromise of not being able to really determine whether M1 or M2 is more appropriate. So they gave the choice to the applicant to choose between M1 and M2.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? Commissioner Ward?
Hi. Can you explain just a little more specifically where the skyline signs are actually located? Because when I think of that, I think of ones that are on the top, very, very tall skyscraper kind of buildings. And that is not what we're looking at here, as far as I understand from the photographs that are mocked up. They're more just over the entryway signs to the... Doors to the building itself. Is that correct?
So the proposed plans that were provided indicated that the sign locations were approximate. So staff had recommended to the Design Review Commission to consider limitations for placement, like a minimum height or a maximum height. But ultimately, the signs were just outright denied. So those issues also could be deliberated.
So they didn't really get to exactly where they'd be located as to... I mean, because it's a pretty tall building. It's one of the biggest in our downtown area, right? So we're not necessarily... We don't necessarily know whether it's at the very top of that building or whether it's at the lower locations that the drawings suggest. Is that correct?
I believe Stephen might have a slide.
There's one that's higher, but the rest are lower. I'm just confused as to where they're proposing to put them.
Yeah, so... Okay. So the location of where the skyline signs will be oriented on the buildings wasn't specified. So at this point, the plans don't indicate specifically where. However, the applicant is here today, and I might defer that question if they would want to provide a bit more information about intentions of where the signage placement might be located or interested areas of where it might be located.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And the Commission can set limitations in terms of height because it's a sign exception request, correct?
That's correct. The Commission can set height limitations and location limitations.
Other questions?
I had a question regarding the brushed color, the aluminum. It seems like there was... I could be wrong, but when you flip through it quickly, it almost seems like it's blending into the actual color of the building, almost like it's trying to emulate the color of the building. But then have that little element of polished look, if you will, with that kind of aluminum. I know they haven't defined the exact location of the skyline, but are the materials and the colors similar to what we're seeing? Like, there's not going to be a red or a yellow, something super bright. The colors that we're seeing on... Can you go to... I think there was a slide with a... Did I get that wrong? Or maybe it was...
Yes, actually.
Pardon me?
Yeah, so on the proposed... Or the DRC-approved plans, if you reference page...
P dot four, right? It says brushed letters on painted backer, right? And so then it shows the laser cut, the acrylic, the painted finish. And then P5 shows it beautifully where they kind of overlay schematically what that looks like with that color, even the different shades of the gray. And you can see that pop. I'd be curious, especially since they only... They're not allowing M1 and M2, just M1 or 2, then M3 per the... I'm doing this by memory, right? And then M3. Is... And I don't know if this is a question for the... For the project proponent, but these are the colors that we would be seeing, correct?
That's correct. That's the materials and colors proposed.
Okay, so that beveled on the edges, the aluminum, the different shades. But we're looking at this kind of gray that's kind of blending somewhat with the colors of the building. The other thing I wanted to ask about the signs, because material actually matters with your... When you're driving or looking, right, to see the eye. I'm getting the sense that some of the concern is about it not blending while the project proponent obviously wants something where you have wayfinding. And so it's about meeting, having that medium. So what I was going to ask is for the skyline sign, which I see... Because I first... When I first read it, I thought it was literally going to be like on sticks on top, like waving. But it... When I looked actually in the staff report, I realized, okay, this is actually on the edge of the building. So what I was going to ask you is, is it flush? Is it sticking out? Is it lighted up from behind? Like, is it something that if you're trying to use it as a wayfinding, you'd find it? Or... Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
I'm trying to kind of distinguish the wayfinding versus the... Ooh, that's an eyesore. You know, because I don't... I'm hope... I think that... And this is conjecture, but I would think that that was why we put the ordinance in place, was for things not to be an eyesore, but to kind of blend beautifully. But then wayfinding has become very important, especially as people are trying to find their way around and get business to this area. Do you know? This is something we can ask the...
Yeah, I might... I would defer that question for design choices to the applicant.
I just wanted to note that if you look at Attachment 6, the 36 pages... The 35th page has a picture of what presumably is anticipated for the... For the signage.
I know, I just can't tell if it's like... It looks like black text to me.
Yeah, because it's just photoshopped on there.
Because it's photoshopped? But it's not consistent with the other one that was that aluminum, right, blended look? So that's why I got confused. Those are two completely different colors. Right. So I think that would be a question for me.
Okay.
Please.
Any other questions for staff right now? Anybody? Yes.
I think... Okay, so just one clarification leading into the discussion eventually. So skyline signs are defined as anything which is 25 feet above the ground. As soon as we exceed 25 feet, we're talking about skyline signs, regardless of the placement on the side of the building?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you. And I believe we'll open the public hearing right now and start with the applicant.
Hello, everyone. I'm Ted Luthen from Ross Luthen Creative. I represent the owners and am the applicant. First of all, I'd like to thank you for all your time. I would like to especially thank Stephen for his time and support. We've been working on this a long time, and it's been a great process. And so we're excited to be here and talk a little bit about what we are proposing. And so we're excited to be here and talk a little bit about what we are, are proposing here. It really boils down to these, these two issues, and what we've got here is, we've got two very large buildings. And, um, we're asking for some freestanding signs and some skyline signs. The freestanding signs that we have here, the two existing ones are really at the entrances to the parking garages. They don't really work as monument signs, they don't, they don't promote tenants, and if you look at the, the, what we've proposed, we propose to kind of remove tenant names off of them and really kind of focus on addresses and who can park where. So the, the sign that's on, um, Mount Diablo, that's really a, an entrance, a, a, an employee entrance to the parking garage. The public entrance is around the backside. And so that's the one where I think we do have a space for a tenant name, but it's mostly address driven. So our argument to the Designer Review Board was, we've got three frontages, we've got two buildings. We think we should be entitled to three signs, the two existing signs are really directional in nature, and these signs are not huge, they're, you know, they're fifty square feet, I think. So ten feet by five feet, you know, twice the size of a queen size mattress sort of size. And they are, the materials we chose to speak to materials, um, we're working with metallic grays, silvers. There's some silver banding on the existing building that we're tying to. The existing monument signs use kind of a brushed silver finish, so we're connecting to that. We wanted to look corporate, so we're not going for retail, we're not allowing color. So, um, you know, Schwab can't come here with blue, they're going to come with a metallic silver. So even, you know, national brands are, are going to be, you know, it's going to be tailored and finished, just like these buildings. These buildings are, are very tight, they've been here since, I don't know, I'm guessing the mid-eighties, something like that, and they're pristine. So that's what we want to maintain, we want to maintain really clean, crisp, corporate-looking signage. So, we're really thinking that the, the M1 and the M2, those are, one goes for the thirteen thirty-one building, one goes for the thirteen thirty-three. The M3 is a unique animal in that there is a strange little space where Scott Seafood used to be that has its own entry, doesn't go in through the lobbies of these buildings. And so that was really the intent with M3, is that it could potentially be another sort of retail, more, more of a retail business like Scott Seafood was, as opposed to the kind of corporate businesses in the rest of the buildings. And they struggled with signage there, they built a, a canopy that came out so that they could get signage, so we said, rather than having them build some appendage onto the building like the last tenant had done, let's provide them some space, but do it in the vocabulary of the rest of the signs. Tight, tailored, nice and clean, so that's what M3 is all about. So, that's, that's kind of our, our justification for the, the wayfind, I mean, the, the monument signs is, seems reasonable that one each, and then one for this unique condition, we've got three frontages. Let's treat the other two existing ones as directional signs and, and not really as monument signs, because they don't really function that way. And then the, um, moving on to the skyline signs. So we worked on the Golden Triangle project, um, when we got that entitlement. And there was concern when that was approved that, that it would open this Pandora's box of signage. And that was, I'm guessing, five years ago, something like that? And there are no signs. There's no skyline signs up there, so that hasn't resulted in this plethora of signs and this sign pollution and, and this sort of thing that, that some people were concerned about. And I think the reason for that is, these signs are being used to entice high-quality businesses and employers. And so the owners are holding those things because they're valuable, and they're going to use them to either, either entice a really good tenant to stay or entice a really good new tenant to come. And that's why you're not seeing this, this, you know, disaster of signs, you know, happening in the world. And I think the same thing is going to happen here, you know, we've got two big buildings, we're asking for two signs on each building. We're open to, you know, exactly if you want to restrict height, you know, that's not that important to us. I think the important thing would be that we do get them up above the tree line and that they are effective. But I don't know that they have to go on the top band of the, of the building or anything like that. The idea behind those is that they are individual letters, they are dimensional, so they're, they're just like a, they're like a retail letter, like a letter you see on Main Street for a restaurant, or the piano shop, or those sorts of things. Internally lit, they all use a warm white, not a, not a bright white, they're all on dimmers, so that they can be dimmed. They're all required to be on timers. If you want to set the times, we'd be open to having some sort of timing regulations associated with them. Especially the ones that are facing, I guess, east and maybe the ones heading north, there might be some residential communities that might be impacted there that we might be concerned about. But really, the, the, the impetus behind the skyline signs and even the monument signs is that back when these buildings were built, the buildings were the prestige. Those buildings were cool places, they still are. And back in those days, small businesses were, you know, Smith and Smith Consulting, they weren't national brands. And so being in a building with prestige was important. And the business landscapes changed, and now the tenants in those buildings are often national brands. National brands like their name out there, they like to be recognized where they are. So I think what's, what's really driving this and what drove the Golden Triangle is the changing business and the changing leasing environment. And trying to respond to the needs of today's tenants and wanting to keep up with those needs. We want, we want those tenants to come here, we want those employers to come here and not look to other places because they might have more enticing signage criteria. And signage is important, I mean, it kind, it kind of sounds silly, but signage is important, especially to national brands. So it, it's really just kind of about, about keeping up with, uh, with the, um, leasing environment and making sure that these buildings stay full, because these buildings really are, that they were when they were built, and I think they really still are the economic engines of this town. So I think that's important. And I am available for questions.
Thank you. You're welcome. Questions? Start out to the end.
All right, so, um, it sounds like, thank you so much for your, uh, presentation, it was very informative. It helps me understand a little bit more of the background of, um, the work that you've done and, uh, what you're doing here with us today. So thank you so much for that. I did want to ask, um, so you touched a little bit upon how the tenants of the building went from smaller tenants that were probably occupied like several smaller spaces inside the tower. Um, but now we're looking at like one or two or maybe three very large tenants that may have pretty good recognition, um, that are looking, that maybe are considering the building as part of their location. And so, um, that's kind of the process from small tenants to large tenants, does it tend to go in cyclical phases from like small to large, back to small? Or is it always kind of one direction where it's like, the buildings tend to start with small tenants, then eventually migrate to large tenants, and that's kind of the end of it?
I think the, I, I don't necessarily have the data to back this up, but I think the, like I said, when these buildings were first built, I think they were probably occupied by a lot more tenants than they have now. And, um, I think our two gentlemen here, um, could probably answer that, but I, I'm guessing that the trend has been to fewer tenants occupying larger spaces, and I think that is probably the goal of the owners of those buildings, is fewer, larger tenants. And we've seen, um, you know, I, I come from the architecture and, and design background, and, and I've seen kind of consolidation of that, 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 um, you know, big groups are buying up smaller firms and small businesses are becoming affiliated, you know, a, a small financial consulting firm becomes affiliated with Schwab or Fidelity or takes on that brand. And I think that's what's been happening kind of for the last thirty or forty years. And so a lot of the businesses that are in there now, even the small businesses, even the businesses with, I don't know, you know, that are leasing hundreds of square feet, not thousands, probably associated with, uh, national brands of some sort.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, um, Commissioner Ward.
Okay, so I'll repeat my question regarding my confusion as to where exactly you want your skyline signs to be located.
Yeah.
I do see your, um, your lovely Photoshop, uh, photos here, and I, I know those are suggestions, but is that, that, that's basically what you're asking for?
Yeah, yeah, that, that, on that T fifteen page.
Yep, I got it.
If you, if you look at the elevations, I think the elevations all showed them at the tops of the buildings. Um, but if you look at the photos, I, you know, the, the two don't necessarily agree. I actually like the positioning of the photographs better than the elevations, I think getting them a little bit lower on the buildings makes sense. Especially at that, at the corner of North California and Mount Diablo there. But yeah, if, if you wanted to make some stipulations that say they go between here and here, that would be fine with us, yeah.
Um, well, obviously, I'm not the one to micromanage that, but, but, uh, so would you say that you're trying to, um, have people who are driving by be able to see them, because, you know, you wouldn't want them too high then? Or are you trying to have a longer viewpoint in terms of people looking at them?
I think for the, I think, um, for the North California southbound, I think that's a little bit more of a distant view. So I think that makes sense to be in the, one of the top two floors of the building. Um, I think for the, um, Mount Diablo eastbound, coming from the freeway, um, same thing, I think top two floors of the building there makes sense. I think at the corner, the, the corner of North California, Mount Diablo, where those come together, I think, you know, bringing them down to the, you know, kind of those middle levels probably makes sense, just because I think that is a little bit more intimate viewing, a little death, less distant viewing. So would it be like on the, on the thirteen thirty-one building, the one on Mount Diablo, one, two, three, four, you know, the fifth floor, and the other one, one, two, three, fourth floor of the North California?
Okay, great, that's very helpful, appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, again, thank you for coming and, uh, answering all our questions, it's very much appreciated. I have a question about the freestanding signs. So one of the things in my brain, uh, says there are two different buildings, so maybe it makes sense to have two different signs, but how much actual information is on the sign that will help facilitate wayfinding, uh, because it doesn't seem, as you said, like they're large. So it's not going to say like these twenty people are in this building.
No, in fact, we are limiting it to a couple, two tenants per sign.
Two tenants.
Two tenants per sign, and we have fairly large on the sign, you know, people are GPS oriented, so, and so fairly large on each sign is a thirteen thirty-one and a thirteen thirty-three, because we also want to make that connection. So we want someone going, I'm looking for Fidelity, they're in thirteen thirty, boom, there it is, thirteen thirty-three, oh, there's their name, kind of that double confirmation. So, that's why we're dedicating quite a bit of the space on the sign to, um, to the address and then
Smaller to the...
Space for two tenants.
Okay.
And again, the, a lot of these tenants are, um, kind of national brands. You don't actually need to read them, it's not like reading, you know, Smith, 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 Smith and Associates. You're going to see Schwab, or you're going to see Fidelity, you're going to see a name that you're recognizing.
There's going to be competition for who gets on which sign?
These gentlemen hope so.
Okay, thank you, that helps.
Yeah, um, sorry, someone asked anybody a question, I forgot my own. Oh, yes, uh, so, given for the, for the skyline signs, since you have to be, you know, twenty-five feet and above, somewhere up in that range, you're talking about third floor, fourth floor, fifth floor for the sign, and that requires that all of the space beneath be occupied by that tenant. Do, how many tenants do you have that would qualify for something like that? That occupy three or four floors?
We're actually proposing to disconnect those two things. So we're proposing that the sign could be for a tenant anywhere in the building. So the sign isn't necessarily on the tenant's wall. So, and, and that's kind of how skyline signs work in general, is that the, the name at the top, you know, the, the US Bank Building at the top of the building, the US Bank isn't necessarily in the entire building, they may be on the, you know, middle floors, but they're the most important tenants, so they get their name at the top, that sort of thing. So we're, yeah, we're proposing to disconnect those two things, and I think that's one of the reasons for the sign exception, is that we don't meet that requirement. We'd love to get big tenants like that, 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 you know, took the whole building or took a big part of the building.
Wondering if that was part of the plan, you have to take the first four floors if you want your name on it.
Again, these gentlemen would love that.
Yeah.
But that is one of the challenges with these buildings too, is that, um, every floor plate's different. And as the workplace has been controlled by larger players, they want everything to be the same. And so, um, you know, it, sometimes that can be a challenge for them to move into these types of buildings, because every floor plate's a little different. They can't plug in their standard workspace plans. Okay, thank you.
Go for it.
I had thoughts on, you, you asked us to, you, you would rather have us be able to provide you some recommendations for height than just say no, right?
Absolutely.
So I had some initial thoughts, and I kind of drew out a diagram of where everything is kind of placed on. Um, al- almost like when you have tall buildings, you have to do a shadow study. So, if, if I'm taking a look at, you know, what people were thinking, and I had a feeling that there was lighting behind it, and that's why I asked the question to staff. Is, is there that back, backlighting that when it's quiet, that, that's kind of the beauty about Walnut Creek, is that when, when the city quiets down, even though it's a bustling city, it actually is quiet and not a bunch of lights, because we're not, um, we're not elsewhere in the Bay Area. So I had a couple of thoughts regarding particularly signed S two and S six. So S six seems to be the one that faces those, um, homes, Office Stow, Shuwi, Almond. Because the businesses around there are kind of like the two-story, so, and I'm not, I, I'm just like kind of loo- looking at things, and so in my mind, that S six maybe doesn't want to be super high so that all the homeowners in that area, they're protected. And then the other thing that I was going to say was sign S two, that faces the Montecito Alma Park Apartments, which those, if I'm not mistaken, are a typical podium building, type five or a type one. You know, so five-story, call it sixty feet high. So that kind of thought process, to me, when I looked at, you know, S one, you're facing another tall building, S two, you're facing Phil's, you cross Olympic, and then you get to the Montecito Alma Park where you have that podium-style building, sixty feet high, so that kind of drives you, you know, do they even see it at that top floor? The S three, again, you're just, you're facing those taller buildings of Cinemark, so I'm not quite sure that it would really affect anyone, but it's really that S six, because the S five, again, you're facing Mancini's and all those Shake Shack. I don't think that it would hit the Carmel Lincoln Avenue homes, but have, did, is, does that kind of thought process? Sorry, I just threw a lot at you.
No, that, that's fine, yeah.
But I'm hoping that there was some thought process of, I want to keep all these signs, and I want the heights to be, to be thoughtfully placed with who my surrounding people are. Do you have ideas of, put those, especially those two particular locations, S six and S two, where it faces those homes?
Yeah, of, of these locations, um, and again, um, these are three potential locations with a maximum of two signs per building. So it's like, pick two out of the three. And the reason we chose three potential locations on the, on the building was, um, you never really know what a tenant might think is valuable. You know, we, we always try to second guess people and, you know, oh, let's put it there, and then, you know, to us, that makes the most sense, and then some tenant goes along and comes along and goes, no, I'd really like to face the traffic coming this way. But anyway, if I were to rub my crystal ball, I would say that, um, the S five location is probably the least valuable from a tenant's standpoint. I think S six is, that, there's, you know, that, there's not a lot of stuff going on in terms of other potential people looking at S six, except really southbound traffic. S one, there is an office building just west of that, but it is set back a little bit more, so there is a clear vantage point coming from Mount Diablo. It's mostly kind of offices and retail, strip retail there. So we think S one just makes sense, because a lot of people are coming from the, the freeway there. S two, just the number of people coming north on California, we'd like to capture. But at the same time, S three, you know, people heading to the freeway, Mount Diablo Boulevard, that, that makes sense too. So, um... So I guess, you know, for the 1331 building, I think kind of our two, first and second choice would be S1 and S2 in terms of best locations. And then S4 and S6. I think S6 wants to be up high just because there's a whole lot of trees just north of there. If you look at that, the photo rendering, you'll see it on that T-15 page. There's quite a bit going on in that S6 location as you're coming southbound. And most of the development down there is kind of single-story for a while, so.
If you were on Stowe, if you lived right on Stowe or Almond, would you be able to see that? Because you're trying to get above the tree line, especially with that lit? I, I don't know.
Yeah, I think because of the, there's a fairly significant tree line between you and that building, I'm not sure you're going to see it from the street. Like, or, you know, from, from one of those buildings there.
Because I agree with you, S1, I don't think.
I don't think that's going to bother anybody.
Yeah, I don't think that's going to bother anyone. S3, again, you're, you're, it's all commercial. The S2, the only thing is, think about that, those podium buildings that are at Alma Park. Because windows do face that way. And then it's that S, it's that S6. I mean, obviously, I haven't calculated, like, here's the window. Here's the sun, here's the homes. I think those are mainly one-story houses around there, not, not two-story.
It is mostly single, single-story down there, yeah.
I'll stop talking, but those were my.
Yeah, well, and, you know, the, the other thing, I, if, if, if lighting was a big concern to everybody and, and we wanted to halo light them, we could halo light them, let the light spill out the back. So I think. If it faces a residential thing, yeah. If it can be viewed from a residential thing, we can, we can halo light it. We do that all the time.
Anything further? Okay, I do have a question. Would simply having a timer that they turn off at 10 o'clock at night solve the problem?
Absolutely, yeah. And, and the same thing with, with the dimmers. If, if they go up and we start getting complaints, they'll be dimmable.
But we could put a requirement to.
Just shut up, absolutely.
Shut off at 10 o'clock.
Yeah, yeah, these are, these are not retailers. This isn't a movie theater. You know, these are, these are businesses that, you know, at best, you know, during tax season, they might be open until, you know, 7:00 or 8:00 or something crazy. But, you know, yeah, if you wanted to shut them off at 10 o'clock at night, 9:00 o'clock at night, whatever you wanted to shut them off, I think we'd be amenable to that.
Okay, I do have some other quick questions. So if I could clarify that there is no skyline signs in the Golden Triangle area currently?
I don't believe so. I'm sorry?
They're authorized for skyline signs.
They are, yep.
But there is none of them existing right now.
Correct, yeah. Is there one up? Ah, I missed one, okay. Oh, okay, there we go.
Thank you.
There's one. And each of those buildings as well is, they have multiple potential locations, but a two-max per building, so same, same requirement.
So if we approve this, we're matching the Golden Triangle. We're not changing anything else?
Yeah.
And.
And they're the same thing in terms of lighting. They're the same thing in terms of timers. They have lights, dimmers, timers.
And it would be safe to assume that you would prefer us not to restrict the height of the skyline signs at this point?
That would be great if you, if you wanted to say, you know, keep them off the very top of the building. We're fine with that too.
Okay, and do you have any idea? I mean, to me, we're obviously in competition with the Golden Triangle for the Pleasant Hill Center, Contra Costa Center in San Francisco, basically. Is, what's the vacancy rate for this particular complex as opposed to the Golden Triangle, as opposed to anything else?
I'll have to ask these gentlemen to, to help me out on that one.
Why don't you count up?
If you just want to come.
You're part of the problem.
Hi, my name's Brett Watts. I'm a commercial leasing broker. I lease about 75% of the Class A office space with a Walnut Creek address. So that would include the Pleasant Hill BART Station, Contra Costa Center, the Walnut Creek BART Station, and downtown Walnut Creek. And encompasses about 14 properties and about 3 million square feet of space. Just to give you a little bit of background, the genesis of this whole discussion of the signage at the Golden Triangle was as a result of marketing the buildings up at the Pleasant Hill BART Station, Contra Costa Center. The county put virtually no limitations on signage up there. I have a building up there, 2999 Oak, where the county has allowed six signs. It's a six-sided building on the building. And we've had that right for 20 years. We currently only have one sign on the building, but we have the right to do it. But in order to attract tenants, some tenants, as Ted was saying, some tenants want to have, if they're very conscious of their name being out there and seen and advertised, in order to go to a building, they want some sort of high-visibility signage, whether it be a monument sign on the street or a skyline sign. I went to Ethan Binder Nagel, this was 10 years ago, and said, you're losing business to the Contra Costa Center because you won't allow this. And so that was the genesis of the signs at the Walnut Creek BART Station. This is really just an extension of this. So Walnut Creek BART Station now has that to offer. And some of the same tenants want that if they're going to come to 1331 and 1333. So that's all we're trying to do is create an even playing field so that the downtown Walnut Creek core can attract tenants both that we're looking at the Contra Costa Center area or the Walnut Creek BART Station. And that's all we're trying to create for. To answer your question specifically about vacancy, the downtown Walnut Creek buildings, Grover Square and 1331 and 1333, which are the only true, what we refer to, Class A buildings in the downtown core with accessibility, the retail amenities, are very well leased right now. I'm 95% leased in one and we're 93% leased in this project. The BART Station buildings, everyone is different, but the average vacancy in the Class A vacancy up there is about 26%. The only difference in that really is that the downtown Walnut Creek has the access to the retail amenities, doesn't have anything to do with the signage. But we do need that in order to continue to attract strong tenants to Walnut Creek in general. We need to have that ability to give these tenants that want that identity, some sort of way to get identity. And we're talking about very minimal amounts of tenants. We're talking about, you know, four signs on the street level, basically four tenant names, and four tenant names on the building in a 400,000 square foot project. So anyway, that's.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions for him? Okay, thank you. Any other questions right now? We'll now open, thank you. We'll now open it up for public comments. Anyone else? Oh, sorry, one more question down here.
Yes, I did have one more question. Sorry, you were just about to go in. I know I'm on you a bit, but thank you so much for your patience and willingness to explain to us. So one thing I do know is that this property falls within the boundaries of the West Pacific Downtown Plan. And I know that there is a plan there to increase the, I guess, density, if you will, of the area with middle-density buildings. And so with regards to the sign, the placement of the signage that's been in the mockup for us, is this also in consideration of like the possibility that there might be future developments adjacent or nearby that may obscure the signs however many years down the road?
You know, I, we didn't think about that specifically. I, I think the, the signs that would potentially be impacted by this would be the S1 on the north side and the S6, on the west side, and S6 on the north. You'd have to get a very large development happening to impact S6. And, but the, the area west of here, I think, is probably ripe for redevelopment. That's probably years down the road. But no, we, we didn't, we didn't consider that a lot. Our monument signs, our freestanding signs are clustered around the Plaza. So those really wouldn't be impacted by future development. And the same thing with that, with the M3 monument sign for the 1333 north side there. Wouldn't really be impacted by, you know, if you did drop in a podium, residential building or something like that, north of, north or west of here.
Okay, thank you. Very helpful.
Thank you again. Any other questions before he sits down? Thank you. Okay, now we will now open this up for public comment. Any member of the public that would like to comment on this project, please step forward.
So I just forgot to make one more comment. There was a question, I can't remember who asked it, about that the signs that were approved at the Walnut Creek BART Station were based on freeway signage. And actually, it was partially based on that, but this is, actually, the ownerships, and I represent those ownerships, we didn't only want signage on the freeway. Yes, that's important, especially to compete with Contra Costa Center. But there was also a need for street level or street signage identity. And so the signage that was approved at the Walnut Creek BART Station, for example, at 100 and 200 Pringle, there's two signs approved on each of those buildings. And only one of the four signs is actually, could be visible from the freeway. The other three are visible from the street. The same thing with Cal Plaza next door, 2121 North California. That's a much bigger building. And the Point and Commission actually approved three signs there. And only one of the signs there, locations, is visible from the freeway. The other two are street signs. And the same thing with 2175 and 2185 North California, the other applicant for that signage. So it was not just intended to be freeway signage. It was to be able to provide identity for, on the street, which is just as important.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we will close public comments and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Would like to go first, Commissioner Ward.
Okay, first of all, I appreciate all the presentations we've had. That's been extremely helpful. I think at its essence, you know, signage is obviously a form of communication. That's why we put signs on things, so wayfinding and also identifying things. I, I agree that our signage program needs to reflect the current business landscape that we have, which has changed a lot since COVID, clearly. And I think it's really, really important that as a community, you know, we say, you know, we are like a premier business location for, for this area, this entire area. We are the business center. And I think it's important that we demonstrate that we have high-quality, you know, name recognition businesses in our community and that we are open for business. You know, it was a real question whether we were open for business for a long time. And we're back and I'm glad that despite Scott's having left you, which I think we all miss Scotts. Do we all miss Scotts? Yes, we miss Scotts. But despite that, it, it appears that you're, you know, doing really well in the occupancy area, that you've got a lot of, a lot of people in there doing a lot of business. They're showing up at work, they're, you know, they're participating in the commercial life of downtown Walnut Creek. And I think it is a huge missed opportunity for this, these buildings, which are, as, you know, we pointed out, some of the largest buildings in the downtown commercial area, to not allow us to demonstrate that this is a thriving business center for us. And so for that reason, I think the requests that you've made are really reasonable. As someone who's perpetually lost, I actually appreciate a little bit more wayfinding. Please, put your car here, this is where we need to go. So I think that's good. And I think that your receptivity to being good neighbors, you know, for some of the residential communities nearby is really important. But it sounds like that can be dealt with really well by dimming, timers, just, just the stuff that you do for everybody else essentially, that we can make that work here as well. So I think this is a reasonable request. I think it's something that would promote and enhance our downtown area. And I think we should proceed with allowing these signs to, to be put on our, our building.
Other comments? Well, let's start down there.
I think I have more of a procedural question.
Sure.
If that's something I can ask. Okay, so because there are two resolutions before us today, one is to uphold the DRC decision, the other is to make the exceptions and approve the appeal, would the motion be to take one of those resolutions and then discuss that and vote on it?
Yes, and if you'd like to make any changes to either one of the resolutions, that would also be fine.
Okay, thank you.
Comments? Commissioner Anderson?
So with respect to the, the freestanding signs, I, I take your point about the parking signs really just telling you how to get into the building, which is not entirely obvious as you're circling around it. The, so, you know, the idea to, to discount, I mean, they are freestanding signs. On the other hand, they're for a different purpose than what's really intended by the freestanding sign ordinance. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't be object to the five signs. Also, if you, if you, if these are two different projects, the two different buildings, you'd have, you know, four or six signs available to you. So, and then I, I think with M1 and M2, rather than choosing between them, you know, one is, you know, 1331 and one is 1333. If you're coming from that intersection and to where those signs are, it'd be nice to know that if there's only one, identifying one building, well, is the other building also 1331 or is it? I mean, it gets, it could be a little confusing. I think having two of them there is, is clarifying. So I would not have an objection to, to the five signs as opposed to four. Or three as opposed to two, whatever it is, however you account them, all the signs. With respect to the skyline signs, yeah, I'm glad you clarified about the, the highway visibility on the other project because I was really having some trouble figuring out why that would be so critical, you know, to distinguish the, the two buildings. And it seems to me that if you, if you're just driving by, you're not going to whatever's in Golden Triangle, you're going somewhere else. And, you know, so it's much more useful, I think, to be able to see them from, you know, you know, arterial streets because you may actually be trying to find the Tesla headquarters or wherever you're going to get in there. So I think actually, in some ways, being visible from busy streets where the traffic actually stops sometimes, it's not going by 60 miles or 70 miles an hour, it seems to me it's actually probably more valuable. So, so for that reason, I, it's hard to distinguish for me between those two projects. And, you know, plus the fact that they're authorized to put signs up, but only one has gone up. You know, this, this is, you know, they're not going to be up there with hammers putting signs up, you know, next week, all over the building. Maybe sometime later they'll have a tenant that qualifies for whatever. But, so I think the four signs in one of those six positions is, is a reasonable approach. And I would, I would permit them on the same basis that they were permitted at the Golden Triangle.
Other comments right now?
I had just one quick comment. And again, thank you, the information has been really helpful and educational in terms of the business community and what they're looking for to recruit to Walnut Creek, which we want. To me, I'm, I'm sort of a minimalist of what appearances look like. So the conversations we had about dimming, turning off at night, not putting way up on the top to say like, la, 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 this is where I am, those are accommodations I think I'd like to have us consider including, just to keep the signage reasonable to the business day and not to the 24-hour days of the community. So I, I'd be interested in that conversation if we can have it.
Okay. I agree with Commissioner Ward that wayfinding is important. Over the years, I've had to go in searching for businesses in that complex and have always felt lost and always turned around and always wind up in the wrong building or the wrong elevator. So wayfinding is very important. I, I would support granting the appeal, which is item attachment one. But I would also add to that, that I would like to. But I would also add to that, that I would like to see us, the, all of the signage lights turned off at 10:00 PM. So, comments?
Motion.
Go for a motion.
So just before you make a motion, I just wanted to be clear for the record. So it sounds like what I'm hearing is that the commission is leaning towards to approve the appellant's request and to adopt that resolution. The resolution currently, right now, would approve the plans that are presented. And so I just wanted to be clear that if the commission has any conditions that are not currently present in the resolution that you would like to see as a body, that needs to be, you know, we need to craft that and include it in the resolution. And if that's something the commission, because I hear, I heard a few commissioners mention aspects like dimming the lights, possibly, you know, turning off, timers and things like that. So I just want to make sure for the record, that's something you'd like.
So my motion would be to grant the appeal with the provision that as far as the skyline signs are concerned, that they be halo lighting, backlit signs, that they be turned off at a time to be negotiated with the staff, can I say it that way? We heard 10 o'clock, but that may not be the right time. And, oh, and I guess the idea that they not be on the very top band.
Dimmable, I think we want dimmable, right?
Okay, sure.
Yeah, particularly for the ones that face residential.
Okay, so backlit, dimmable, timers, and not on the top band.
Okay, and if that's what the commission is looking for, I'd like to ask the applicant to confirm on the record that that's acceptable to them?
And if you could talk about a potential time when you think it would be appropriate to turn off so that we can kind of have a discussion about that?
Absolutely. Yeah, that all sounds great to us. And in our original document, the T8, it said, it says, you know, no exposed raceways, no exposed electrical components, illuminated signage should be turned off between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM daily. Signage may be lit, lighting source color temperature to be 3,000 degrees Kelvin white. All sign, all face-lit signage with white faces shall be fabricated with dimming capabilities to allow the brightness to be adjusted after signs are installed.
What he said.
Yeah, so we actually have that language in our.
It's on T8. It's in there under the lighting section.
Thank you, but yeah, that's, sounds great to us.
Do you want to read back the proposal?
So it would be the motion to adopt the resolution to approve the, to uphold the appeal, grant the appellant's request, applicant's request, with the four conditions that Vice Chair Anderson identified, which is the timing, turning off, back on, backlit, halo, and not being on the edge of the building, that was stated before, or the tallest building.
Okay. Second, possibly?
Oh, yes. I second.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Kwak?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Klop?
Yes.
Commissioner Reiser recused himself. Commissioner Nating?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Chair Strongman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And moving on to commission considerations, do we have any?
Staff does not have any reports.
Okay, moving on to commission member and staff reports or announcements. Seeing none, we will be now adjourned. Thank you for tonight.